Okay, it being seven o'clock, we'll call the July 11th, 2022 meeting of the Oxford Planning Bullet to Order. Before we do, I'm going to read this note. In addition to tonight's video recording on Oxford Cable Access pursuant to Mass Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making recording must inform the Chair. All attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Next item on the agenda is planning is not requiring subdivision approval. We don't have any. So do we wait for 7:05? Or do we just start? Or do you want to do something, fill in the gap a little bit?
Go down to Kathy's way.
Let's move to Kathy's Way. Endorsement of performance security. Yeah. So I think I have that.
Yeah.
I just have that. Yep. So that's just for Chris, right? To sign?
Correct.
Well.
And the applicant has submitted it in a format that council's approved.
Okay.
Your packets, you have three pages. Mr. Chairman, you have the fourth page, that is the signature page for the clerk to sign.
Okay.
Mr. Allen is also here, too, if the board has any questions.
Does anybody on the board have a question?
I do not.
So this is for Chris, right?
Yes.
My only comment was, Mr. through the Chair, that if made sure Town Council, even though it's their approved form, they have reviewed it and they understand the parties involved and they're okay with those parties as involved.
It's to form?
It's just a form. Well, I'm wondering, you know, a lot of this hinges on Shore Tech Insurance Company. Texas Company.
Right, and it's a binding document. That's the form will have to be recorded at the registry.
Okay.
Any questions?
They're not sure Tech has the assets to back.
Do we see all the fine print, that their way of backing out of doing stuff if something should happen? Because we've gotten burnt by these type of, these performance bonds, quite frankly. I mean, I'm telling you, we have been burnt by them. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any problems with the document, that's all. I don't know. I'm hoping that the developer never has to use them, okay? That's our goal in life, is to release lots so that you can do your work there.
Thank you. If I may also tell the board that I am personally responsible.
There or there would be great.
If I may, I'm also, would like to tell you that I'm personally responsible for the bond, as well as the bond company. I am personally responsible for that, so.
Just say your name for the record.
I'm sorry, it's Conrad Allen. I'm the developer of the Kathy's Way subdivision.
Excellent. All right, Chris, have you signed it?
No, we wouldn't.
No.
I just want to make sure before I sign it that.
Yeah, well, let's make a motion that we.
Should we get, do you feel better having it reviewed by council?
No, I mean, if Tony's comfortable with it.
But towns do, I assume.
Like I said, my 30 years, my 30 years on, close to 30 years on this, over 30 years on this board, has proven that bonds aren't worth the paper they're printed on, okay? And those that have gone out, and we've had a bond on and they've defaulted on their obligations, we never were able to, you know, get compensated for any of that.
They're still dealing with that.
Consulting with readily available public information. Sure Tech Insurance is a Fortune 500 company, with a treasury limit in excess of $160 million capacity to provide surety for serving standalone co-surity reverse flow projects in the amount of $500 million.
They sound like they're a big.
So that, that's what they do.
Right, it's what they do.
That's what they do, okay? But do they have any data in there that'll indicate what will make this performance bond unusable to the town? That's why we're getting it, is for the town, not for the developer per se, but for the town. Because the last one I saw got defaulted, was a tri-party agreement between the town of Oxford, the developer, and the bank for redoing Ashworth Drive after they put in a forced sewer main down the whole road. And the bank went belly up, and that meant the whole three-party agreement thing fell apart and the road never got fixed, okay? The town's been patching it ever since. But it never got completed, never got finished. And before that, what was that subdivision up in there, the Dudley Line?
New Marsh Road.
Henry Marsh Road. That thing there went belly up and the town found out every performance bond they had on every lot was useless.
But that was the last century.
Yeah, well, not long ago. I remember.
It was in the 90s.
Yeah, well, I grant you, it was back in time. That was my only concern, okay? That's my only concern.
The company itself is a Fortune 500 company, and if they look, they are A rated for all their products.
I don't know what else, what other information.
The developer himself also being listed as responsible as well for the bond, I'm comfortable with it.
We could try and get him on the phone, see if any, let him know what's in their account. We don't need to vote, right?
Yeah, I think we need a motion to accept this performance bond.
Is there a motion to accept this surety as presented by the developer?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion by Matt?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I'll say aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, Chris, signing that for you now. It's like, everything just goes back in here, right?
So Mary, will you know the, will you know the answer?
Am I responsible for having that recorded?
Oh, yeah.
He's going to sign this.
Nope, you got to sign. You got to sign it. Do you got a pen?
Yeah.
So Matt is signing in your chair?
As assistant, yeah. Okay.
My name was indeed honored to sign.
Oh, do we need them both to sign?
No, there were two copies there, just in case if one of them didn't show up.
Good covering there, Tony. I'm impressed.
Proper planning. Okay, all right. So we'll wait for Mary to bring that back, throw it in here, so it doesn't get lost.
So I didn't bring my stamp in here with me. Do you want to pick it up in the morning, Conrad?
Sure.
So I can finish putting my stamp on it?
Sure.
Yeah, you're not going to get it for record.
As promised. Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item will go, it being 7:05, will have a continued public hearing, 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street. Application for special permit, land disturbance permit, applicant and owner, DJ Enterprises Incorporated, common driveway to serve three locks. Action date, September 11. Is Danny here tonight? Is he coming?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman, but we did receive the peer review report last, late last Friday.
Pretty substantial.
Yes, and then this morning it was forwarded to the applicant. I trust it will take them a little time to provide the follow-up comments and additional information required. But I did want to share that again on Friday evening, we received a report from Graves Engineering. And we're also awaiting comments from Fire Department as well, and that should be forthcoming.
So do we, do we need to vote to continue the public hearing?
We'd recommend that the board vote to continue the public hearing.
Do we have something from the developer asking for a continuing?
No, not at this time. The action date for this one.
September 11. Oh, that's right, we don't need that.
We don't need it. The only, only comment I would have on this thing is, is he going to be ready, ready time for the next meeting? Because that one, you said there was nothing really on the agenda for the next meeting.
Correct, correct.
But the meeting after that, totally different story.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't want to create something on the agenda that the only reason we're here is to address that, he's not ready.
Well, why don't we just schedule it and see what happens?
Okay.
They can.
Right, they can request an extension, and if they have to request an extension to the time to approve by September, they do that at the same time and we act on it at the next meeting.
Okay, anybody want to make that motion?
I vote that we continue.
I will move that we extend the public hearing on, the continued public hearing on 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street to.
On July 25.
At.
We can do 7:05.
7:05.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Chris. Any more discussion? It being known, call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. We don't need to vote on the endorsement, right?
No.
Of the reorganization? All right, so we can talk about that after. So why don't we go down to 23 Lovett Road, application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. Applicant and owner is, oh boy, Triantophilos Demopolis and Gina Gingurelli. Construction of a new single-family house driveway and associated site work.
I call him Phil.
Huh?
His first, I call him Phil.
That's what he uses as a nickname, Phil.
If you can just say your name and who you represent and that sort of thing.
For the record, John Grenier, JM Grenier Associates. I'm the civil engineer that was hired by Phil to prepare the stormwater management plans for his proposed new home. The parcel is located on Lovett Road. It's a 10 and 1/2 acre parcel. The, as you can see on the plans, it's got a rather narrow entrance before it opens up into the rear 2/3 of the property. The house will be located rather centrally on the parcel. And in order to address stormwater management, recharge, treatment of runoff, what we are proposing to do is install a series of four dry wells, three along the driveway entrance, and a fourth one that would be off the backside of the driveway. And each of these, we would capture the water through infiltration trenches, so those would be stone-lined infiltration trenches that would either infiltrate or transmit water to these multiple dry wells along the driveway. And also, in order to capture and infiltrate runoff from the roof, we are proposing two series of, they're plastic arch chambers, they're Storm Tech, they're about 16 inches tall, about four feet long, and we have two series of nine, one to capture the rear portion of the roof runoff and the other to capture the front portion of the roof runoff. The balance of the site would just be, you know, landscaping and whatnot. We did provide calculations showing that we do reduce the amount of runoff up through the 100-year storm event. So I know that, I believe plans, we submit electronic copies to the town engineer. I don't know that we've, he's had time to review them yet. But just in general, we've, we're capturing all the runoff, we have erosion control on the down, the down gradient portions of any areas that we're disturbing and making sure that we capture and recharge runoff. So that's really the long and short of it. You have any questions? Oh, one thing that was brought up is, we do need to reach out to the Fire Department. I'm sure if it's a fairly lengthy driveway, they might want an area for a turnoff or a turnaround, and I talked to Phil about some locations that might work for him, as well as the Fire Department, for an area where they can turn around because.
They're not going to want you to exceed 8% anywhere.
Right. And just, if you have a long, narrow driveway, it's going back, you know, 800, 900 feet.
No, they're going to want to know the, they're going to want to know the grade.
Okay.
What's the concrete on that now?
I don't think we exceed 8%, but I'll, I'm pretty sure we don't. I just want to, I'd have to check with the other engineer in my office, but I'm confident we don't.
You should show that as a side view of something, to show the grade.
On a profile?
Oh, yeah. If you're going to go to the Fire Department, the Fire Department's going to want to know that.
Okay.
I don't see what's entering Lovett Road, I don't see any kind of a plot in it, what I'm looking at at this point.
On the, there's two sheets to it. If you look at the second sheet, that's the erosion control. So we have a stone apron.
I see that.
Out at Lovett Road. And then that shows all the other areas where we have.
Looks like it just pitches straight down into the road, though. I see 464, 564, 568, basically.
There's actually at the bottom, there's.
There's another, there's a dry well right at the.
About 30 feet of flat right at the bottom.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Just, I mean, you're the engineer, but just so you know, I looked, we looked at the part where the contours are closest.
Mm-hmm.
At one point, it's about a 15% driveway. 40 scale, right?
The 40 scale.
Yeah, at one point, up to like, if you put 100 feet on there, from 580 up, it goes all the way to 595, that 100 feet.
Yeah.
15%, right?
I got to check with the other engineer in my office. Well, actually, let me. I know he's trying to follow the contours.
Yep. You know, somewhat, so you don't need to be cut, you're not driving up an alleyway, so to speak, but.
Mm-hmm.
I know the Fire Department has been pretty particular about driving from the road up into a steep driveway, so they bottom out, so that might be something you're going to have to investigate.
Over 100, yeah, I'm going, say about.
If you do the, yeah, the 580 contour up, if you measure it at 100 feet.
Let's say 580 up to 600, so they have 20 feet of elevation over 480, 120, call it 130 feet. Yeah, so, all right, I'll talk to the Fire Department about that, see what we can work out.
Yeah. Another question, obviously, that's the only strip of land you own, right? You don't own a lot to the right of it, up the driveway?
No, no. I think that's, I think that's Tom Purcell's daughter owns that.
Okay, the next question.
Oh, no, she owns, I'm sorry, she owns to the left. I see that one's down. I don't know who owns to the right.
And a power?
A power.
Power?
So, yeah, that is, he's got 50 feet of frontage, just over 50 feet of frontage to get all the way back.
They did pork chop block.
They eat pork chop block.
They had no idea that the thing was that steep. If they did, they'd sold it. Buy it away type thing.
So I have another question. I noticed that the plan says existing septic system.
Yes.
So they're already building a septic system?
When we were hired, the surveyor gave that, he has, I guess, they had installed the septic over there already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just noticed some typos as far as some of the words in there.
Sure.
Instead of being suitable, it just, the B is missing. And it's in multiple places on the sheets.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're going to fix the plan, you can fix that.
Suitable, okay.
But anyway, I guess you got enough to accept it.
No, we're just taking for the submission.
This thing's going to go through third-party review, right, Tony?
I would anticipate, I would imagine I would.
With the scope, the scope that they are.
Who, and who does the review? Is it Graves?
Graves.
Okay. I worked with them in multiple other towns, so they're great to deal with, so.
And again, you got, you got a lot of catch basins on that driveway for recent federal issues.
And the length of it, to kind of capture all that runoff.
And so nothing is going into the public roadway?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not an easy site, for sure.
No, no, no.
No, I agree.
What do we require to be recorded against title? I mean, obviously, the people that build the house know about maintenance of the catch basins and the controls for the roof runoff. What runs with the land to let the next buyer know that either the town may inspect, or they have an obligation to make sure the catch basins are maintained and that sort of thing? I'm looking at the notes on the plan, and you have pre-construction, construction, what you're going to plan, post-construction. I'm just thinking, you know, 10 years goes by, like that.
But wouldn't this be on the deed, but it's a, wouldn't this go follow the deed, does it see a deeds? No?
I don't know. I don't.
The special permit, no?
Well, it's a special permit, yeah, I guess so, so there would be.
I believe that our new bylaw, we are requiring stormwater decisions and probably an operation maintenance agreement to be included.
So we're going to, we're going to cover that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm, this all looks great, but I'm just thinking 10 years down the road.
They sell property, someone else did, and all of a sudden, they're not maintaining things, water's running right off into the road.
Washing the road out.
Yeah, and then they say, well, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't do anything.
Hey, I didn't.
That's how, I see people fill the swells in, because I don't want that shit in my house.
I've seen it, I've seen people, we've had, done easements to capture water and route it around, and somebody didn't like it, and they, they land, they install the pool and they landscape it. It looked beautiful, but doesn't work anymore.
Okay, so we're going to handle this one, we're not just shoveling it off to Jared?
Because it's more extensive than administrative review, we're going to send it out to the third party for full review.
Okay.
So it will go to for a public hearing, a notice will be notified.
All right, so we're not going to schedule a public hearing tonight?
Yeah, no, no, we're going to accept the submission, Paul.
Accept the submission and schedule a public hearing probably wouldn't be until.
Back end of September?
Or at least August. And we know that August 8 is already pretty busy, so.
Yeah, let's, let's go to the second meeting in August.
Let's take care of the submission first. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll move.
We approve the submission.
So moved? I second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carried unanimously. Do we have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, for August.
August 22nd?
22nd.
22nd, 05.
7:05 Q.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Matt. No, yes.
Mark.
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 It's okay.
One of the Ms.
Here we go.
Any more discussion?
Don't comment.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
I had, last, the last meeting, I had everybody's name written out of paper, I didn't do that. Sorry about that.
Oh, you laugh. Sometimes I approach the table when they call the case and I don't remember my client's name.
It's good. The blank face, the blank expression.
Who are you again? I remember your fact pattern, don't worry.
All right, why don't we do the endorsement of the reorganization documents? We're just signing, right?
We're just signing.
We're going to do that later, okay.
We can go do it now, just go right, send a folder, piece of paper, write down.
We can even do two things, we could do your report while we're doing this.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We could do his report while we're doing this.
No, we should be paying attention to Tony's report. Go ahead, Tony.
All right, just need a pen to go with it. Where did we, their name appears?
I guess the dead pen's been used.
Anybody need a pen?
Craig, come to my office sometime and ask, does anybody need a pen? You're unsure of that.
I have a guy in my office that, my pen is in pencils disappear, he's one of the field guys, and like, every month, at the end of the month, he'll come in with a roll, with a rubber band and put them on my desk.
There you go.
They all come back. So then they double, so now I've got twice as many.
Will you still run out?
Matt, we got to sign this twice.
Mr. Roger, that's the only one that won't sign these.
Do we have, do we have minutes to approve also?
No.
No.
No, tell me and I will stop them off.
Congratulations.
Especially last week.
Well, Tony had COVID, Mary, what were you doing?
Staying away from it.
Right.
I don't blame her.
That's like staying out of the office.
I would have done the same.
All those lingering, all those lingering, you know.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so for, for the next meeting, I'll have a draft of the subdivision rules and regs, as promised, as.
Just that one section or the whole thing?
I hope to have the whole thing.
Oh, wow.
I hope to have the whole thing, but whatever I have, I'll share.
Okay.
How's that? And an update on 608 Main Street as well, as promised, I was supposed to have an update on my calendar, I thought, at this meeting, but I'll find an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's all.
That's it?
Yes.
Because on your, you talked about upcoming agenda items, so, Matt, remember to bring that up?
Sure.
So, can I correct me? Matt had just sent me an email saying, why don't we, and I was thinking about it, why don't we make our packets, like, available to the public, our information packets? Now, I was thinking about that, right? And then I'm thinking, well, they are public information, right, but there is telephone numbers on there, that sort of thing, do we want to just have it out on the website? I think that's what you're suggesting, Matt, right? Like you did with the big projects?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that something we should consider as a board, if we can do that?
I had brought it up because other towns do that, or used to do it before Oxford.
Yeah.
All the major permitting boards did that, Board of Selectmen, zoning, everybody, along with the agenda, they usually had a zip file or something with all the.
I don't know, I don't see the.
Public documents.
I don't see the selectmen in this term doing that. They don't make their packet information.
But the plans are available.
Yeah, and they get, they get open meeting rooms.
Someone's open time, right? They're available, yeah. So if somebody wants to come in and look at these plans, they are available.
Of course, yeah.
Right.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's any problem with putting the submission online. The only thing, you know, between Friday and the Monday of a planning board meeting, right? right? If it wasn't for the last minute, nothing gets done. Stuff gets submitted at 11 o'clock in the morning. As long as there was a disclaimer that says.
Sure.
This, this is not, this, you know, the dispositive record that will be reviewed because this last minute changes every day.
The official record is in Town Hall, this is a courtesy.
Yeah.
Like this was done today, there's no way they always.
There's no way.
Well, I'm thinking about for like the bigger projects that we had especially, but even some of the other ones that generate some interest, you know, if there's going to be a public hearing, having people have access to it beforehand where they can print it out.
Members of the public might attend the meeting based on something they see online, whereas they may never get down to the office to review stuff.
I, I agree. I don't want to be, I just, I don't want to be, I don't want to be like a throwing more work at Tony. So I would suggest that we, if the board agrees that we'd like to do that, then we say we'd like to do that, and they can work out the logistics. And if it happens in a month and a half or two months, then that's great. Does that, does anybody have a problem with that?
I just want a disclaimer that.
Yep.
We're, we're not accused of a last-minute bait and switch as far as what we're reviewing or a public hearing is somehow prejudiced or we create issues on appeal because between the submission and what we, what we reviewed at the meeting changed because.
Well, and that, and that was brought up actually by town council at the last board of selectmen meeting, where he said, you know, the place of record is Town Hall for the information. The information that's placed on the website is a courtesy. But I agree, we should have.
And maybe that's the direction we go in, which is, if you want up to date on this submission, please check in with the Town Hall.
Yes, yes. I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
I don't want to trip us up on it. I just want to get more information.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Face the point, supplying so many copies of drawings and everything else.
Some have.
All of us and staff and anybody else, not one to put, they'd have to scan this in because they'd have to shrink this thing down, or they'd have to do something. Make a copy of this.
Again, it's still available to the public.
And with the updated subdivision rules and regs, for example, we will be requiring by default electronic copies in addition to the hard copies, so in one respect, it'll be easier for us to be able to populate that on the website. I love the point about the disclaimer, I totally agree.
Yep.
And it's, you know, that's transparency, that's informing the folks.
Great idea, right.
And leaving a number on there too, so people can call for, for any real-time information and whatnot. So, yeah, it's, it's doable, and I appreciate, give it, to give us a little time so Mary and I can kind of sort through the logistics of it.
Is any, is anybody against it? I mean, is there any, anybody have a problem with that? Okay, so we're just kind of, no vote or anything, we're just kind of, FYI. Thank you. I think that's it.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, I'll like, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.